Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to our -- good morning. Here we go. Good morning and welcome to the Mesa City Council meeting for the morning of Thursday, October 20th. All of our council are present. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is a presentation and to provide direction on proposed changes to the Mesa zoning ordinance regarding temporary use permits. Rachel and Sarah, good to have you with us this morning.
Good morning. All right. Mayor, council, as you just mentioned, we're here to discuss with you today some proposed text amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding temporary use permits and temporary use categories. So just to give you a kind of recap and background of what temporary use permits are, these are discretionary permits that are approved by the zoning administrator, and they are really meant to address temporary uses that occur on a limited duration and that really do not alter the physical character of a development. So currently, our zoning ordinance addresses these, but it's very limited in the scope. So we only have two uses that qualify for a temporary use permit, which are swap meets and farmers markets. All other temporary uses get handled through our special events license, but with that license, they are limited to a duration of four consecutive days and four events per year. And if we have an event that exceeds these time limits, they need to go through the special use permit process to receive approval of those. And that goes through the Board of Adjustment, which is a public hearing process and ends up being around a three- to a four-month process to get that approved. So the purpose of these text amendments is to really help alleviate some of that kind of bureaucracy of going through that process. So with this, we are looking at ways to expand the scope of the temporary use category and then allow these uses where appropriate under a less stringent review process. So with this, we'll be defining more temporary uses and then updating the procedures and guidelines with these. So staff's recommendation is, like I just mentioned, to expand the temporary use category for other uses. So in the category, we'd be including uses such as Christmas tree lots, haunted houses, fireworks stands, parking lot sales, and we would be allowing these for a duration of 90 days per calendar year, but there would also be the ability to do a one-time 30-day extension within that calendar year if they came forward and requested that at the zoning administrator. With this, we're also looking at process improvements where we know certain events occur on an annual occurrence. So with this, we would be setting up a process that we could approve these on an annual basis for a three-year period, as long as all those operational standards and all the kind of site planning of that remains the same. And then finally, with this, we'd be refining our operational standards and development standards within the zoning ordinance to clearly define kind of the parameters for these events. So we have taken this before the public for several public meetings. We've been before council a couple times to discuss these changes. We have gone to Planning and Zoning Board as well. We've had three public meetings thus far, and we're going to be having a fourth one on November 1st. But before that, we'll be taking this to Planning and Zoning Board for their final recommendation and approvals, so that we could come back to you on December 8th for your final blessing on this. And with the public, we have received just positive feedback about these proposed changes, so no anticipated concerns with the public on this. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. So to get this temporary use permit, is it still -- is it as complicated a process as the special use permit with the Board of Adjustment? Is it -- I mean, if there is an annual seasonal event that is, we know it's going to be multi, maybe generational, like some of the events are in our city, I get that it's a good idea to come in every three years and say, hey, has anything changed? Are you -- is the crowd -- I mean, let's take a fresh look at this, because sometimes things get stale and things get sloppy, and it's good to have these conversations. But every three years, are we going to put people through an inquisition, or how easy is it to re-up?
Mayor, it's an administrative process. It's pretty straightforward. We're receiving an operational plan and a site plan, just to ensure that it's meeting all of the regulations set in the zoning ordinance. It's a much faster and less expensive process than having to go through the special use permit process. But with that three-year kind of duration that we are looking at, it would be very simple that we've been discussing with our tax and licensing, that we can just send out a reminder every year, just asking them to confirm if they are still in compliance with the plans that they provided to us.
And I should know this, but do temporary use permits require council action?
No, those are administrative, so they'd be approved by the zoning administrator.
Yeah. So that's what this is probably like the simplest process we could offer.
And special use permits apparently don't require council action either, because they go through Board of Adjustment?
That's correct, Mayor. They go through the Board of Adjustment, but since it's a public hearing process, there's notification required, and it's just a lot more timely because of all those requirements with notification.
Great, thank you. I think this is great. Those were just some of the questions I had. Mr. Freeman.
So looking at some of the recommendations, temporary use, Christmas tree lots, the fireworks stands, are there anything else that falls in those categories that we normally have in the city?
They're grouped under two broad categories, and one is temporary outdoor sales and the other one is temporary outdoor entertainment. So that's where some of these examples kind of fall. So we have parking lot sales, that would fall under the temporary outdoor sales category. Let me try to think of car shows are often special event licenses that we come in that exceed that four days per year.
So that would streamline those processes for them?
That would.
Just doing a site plan and basically defining what they do?
Correct.
And then submitting that for just over-the-counter permit?
Yeah. And maybe, Sarah, let's help us to be clear, because even the staff, we kind of make sure we get this straight. So we're -- this is the temporary use permit. They still have to get the license for the event also, right? So there's two parts to this. This is kind of dealing with the land use component of a special event. They're still having to get the special -- is it a special license?
Special event license.
No, special event license, I always miss that. But we're also trying to mirror that up and work on that side, so that there's also a three-year -- submit that in the first year and try to create a process where as long as there's no changes made to that, that review can stand also. So we're trying to marry those two up. But they are two different, and that's what frustrates some of the event organizers, is when they recognize they have to either get a SUP or now a TUP. That's one step, then you still have to get the special event license. So we're trying to make sure that's clear. You're going to hear today, I think, just, I think it's the next presentation, with the creation of our special events office, that's the goal they're going to play. They're going to be almost like the advocates, the ombudsman to help people understand that process, which we've never really had. We've kind of stuck them over here and planned, and then we, you know, they think they're done with it. No, 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 you're going to go talk to licensing. So we're trying to make all that work a lot smoother.
Yeah. And Mayor and council, and just to add on to that, so staff is currently working with our DIME system, so that when you come in to apply for this, it would just be the one time that we could trigger both the review of that temporary use permit and the special events license, so that the customer isn't having to come in twice and try to touch that.
Is there any way that you can combine the license and the permit, or is that just legally apples and oranges?
Well, there are two different, really two different review, kinds of reviews, right? This is to do with like, is it, is the event that's taking place conducive to this kind of land, is the surrounding uses the other -- help me out, Nana. What is your, what are you looking at here different than, you know, how many police officers you'd need and how many bathrooms you need and things like that?
Mayor, council, two things. The land use issue, we look at the physical impact to the surrounding areas, whether there is traffic control plan, what it's adjacent to. So those are the things that we look at. The license, one key part may be even requiring alcohol license for the event, which the land use doesn't do with it. So that's why they get a special use line, a special event permit from tax and licensing. But Mayor, to answer your question, that's why we are working together with tax and licensing to combine the application. So it's going to be reviewed concurrently by both departments, but each department then will, after its approval, issue the specific permit, which will all be the same review process.
And Mayor and council, when there's a special event license required, you don't always need the temporary use permit. So when someone comes in for a special event license, they submit that application and starts that process, but the temporary use permit would be required in conjunction with that only if they're exceeding the time limits in the code. So, and what we're trying to do is combine those two processes, so that even though there are technically two different permits out there, it goes through one review process, and then they're issued together at the end of that.
And it's the same application? Because to me, that seems like a really--
As they're entering it in, it'll feel like that, yes.
Correct.
That seems like a really good idea, because what we're trying to avoid is the frustration of, oh, my gosh, I went through the city bureaucracy, and now you're telling me I need to do it again. So the question is, how do we avoid that?
We're trying to, we're on that, yes.
Right, correct, Mayor. So that's where we talk about DIMEs when they come in to apply for the temporary use permit, that it would automatically trigger that review of the special events license, that they aren't going in twice, applying for two different items.
Mr. Luna.
Thank you for streamlining the process. I remember the Mesa Community College is right on campus. They used to hold a farmer's market, and I'm not as aware of this, but in order for them to actually have it, they had to have students involved. And, you know, it's, this is a public farmer's market, so it was impossible for them to get students to be part of that. And so they went through a lot of frustration trying to get this farmer's market, which is going to be beneficial to northeast Mesa. And so this, now, if they decide to do that in the future, they just need to get the SUP in order for that to happen, is that correct?
Mayor, council member Luna, so with this, they would just need to get the temporary use permit as opposed to the special use permit, as currently under the code is required.
Okay, because they usually do it during the winter, starting, you know, December all the way through April, so they just need the TUP then.
That's correct. With the special event license.
With the special event license. And they, and did you say that this is just a once-a-year permit, or would they do it for the three years or as long as they're going to hold it?
Council member Luna, so it would depend on what kind of event it is, but if they do run recurring every year, and then they come in each year and show that their original application is still true and accurate and reflects the event that they're running, then it could be approved on a multiple-year basis, up to three years.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Redio.
Would you say, so not necessarily if you get a special license, a business license, you need a TUP, but if you use a TUP, you do need a license, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And what's the scale of applications that come in for these that we're making a change for a temporary use permit?
Mayor, council member Heredia, I can't speak to the number of special event licenses that come in, since that comes through tax and business, but we see probably around three to four events per year in the Planning Department that they want to exceed the four days per calendar year or four consecutive days that we end up processing through a special use permit.
So this grouping that we're talking to today really is triggered by not someone who wants to have an event, you know, once during the year, one day, maybe even just a weekend. This is over a period of, we have four days now, and for a total of 90 days during a year, or something like that.
That's proposed for the temporary use permit.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So that's what we're talking about. But if it, we're just talking about someone who wants to have one event during the year, and they're going to do it one time, that's not what, that's not--
Not this. Vice Mayor.
Somewhere, maybe it was in a different presentation, I saw something about timelines, because there's a confusion in the community, how much time they need to apply for in advance, and then what happens is they apply whatever they think is appropriate.
We're going to talk about that in the next presentation.
Okay, maybe that's where I saw it. And it's confusion, like, when to get started, and there's always pressure.
Yeah, we'll talk about that next.
Okay, great, thanks.
Great. So this is agendized to provide direction, and we're not voting on this, so you're just giving us an update on what, at some point, is this going to come back to us for an ordinance to change process?
Mayor, that's correct. So we are proposing to come back on December 8th for your final action.
I'm sorry, there you go. Thank you. So again, I just want to underscore, I think this, the appearance of one application is the right way to go, and I, so that's what you've said, and I just want to endorse that. And then the other thing I could see going wrong is, and again, people being frustrated, saying, oh, yeah, I got that license, I got that permit, it's been two or three years, I thought I'd checked out my city boxes, and now I'm out of compliance, just kind of innocently in good faith, didn't realize this was a three-year treadmill I need to get on. Do we have a, can we calendar at the beginning of that three years, saying, you know, two years and eight months from now, we're going to all--
I think in the next presentation, I think Andrea and her folks can talk a little bit about, I think with a special events office, that's really going to be their role, is to kind of be that, help with these special events and monitor them, help them get through the process, and watch, you know, those are on the three-year review, they'll be on, they'll be responsible for kind of following up. It's not just three years, and we'll see you in three years later. There's still going to be some, let's go back and check, see how things went, if we need to tweak things, but avoid the fear, the process of creating the application. That doesn't mean we're not going to go and make sure the event's still taking place as planned. But we can, I think that will be a good question for the next presentation.
Okay. We'll see how Roger handles that. He knew he might really, you know, stumble out of the blocks. Get ready, Roger. All right.
Mayor, I'd like to just add one comment. In previous presentations, we had the drive-through text amendment added onto this presentation, and for anybody watching concerned, hey, where did that go? There's another public meeting on November 1st in which we're addressing that and still working on the processes of that, correct?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor Duff, that's correct. So on November 1st, we'd be discussing the three text amendments that we've been coming before you, the temporary use permits, the outdoor seating areas, and the drive-through amendments.
Right, okay, thank you.
All right, council, any other questions for these ladies? Thank you. Anyway, this is important work, we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, one B, is a presentation and to provide direction on a new special event and downtown events policy.
Andrea Moore, Director of Parks, Rec, and Community Facilities, and I have with me today Louis Ruiz, our Deputy Director over Commercial Facilities, which also includes now our special events office, and Roger Singleton, our Supervisor over Special Events. And so I last came to you in May, when we were talking about our budget presentation with a discussion of launching a special events office that would apply citywide. And so since then, we've been busy working on setting up policies and procedures and hiring staff to be able to support that. And what we're presenting to you today is the policy draft that was included in today's agenda item, and this overview that we're going to talk through this morning as a launch point for culture change, a procedural change, consolidation of what a special event is in the city of Mesa. And so this includes events that are both within the park system, where we have the lion's share of them, but also things that come through that may not be on city property would still fall through, going through the special events office. And we had our master planning process that we recently talked about. There was quite a bit of public outreach on that, where we heard from our residents that special events are very important at Mesa, people are really satisfied and enjoy going to those, and feel like we're meeting their needs for special events. But we also know that there's some frustration there, there's a lot of steps that take place between going through all the different types of reviews that need to happen in the city, and also on the part of event promoters, trying to understand what all those steps are. And so we are attempting to address all those. It's definitely a work in progress, and what we're presenting today is hopefully a launch point, based on the direction that you give going forward, that this is how we're going to assist people who are putting on special events, again, both within city departments and outside of the city, throughout the city. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Louis and let him start explaining what we've been putting together here.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Thank you for your time this morning. So as Andrea mentioned, since about May, we have been meeting continuously, often, and a very wide, casting a very wide net around what we're trying to do with special events. We have some priorities and some objectives that were set ahead of time, prior to us presenting in May, and some others that have come up during our time of discovery. We have met with city departments, we've been meeting with event organizers, both city event organizers as well as outside organizers, and as we do that, to understand what the process has been and where we want to be, some objectives have come to the surface, and here's what they are. So our main objectives have been to increase support and coordination of special events in the city. Again, I think the message to us is that we want to be a welcoming city for special events, we want to have a consistent and transparent process throughout this, which is, has not been, and not necessarily because of anything other than just the fractured way that the process has been. So one of the things that we're going to strive for, and we have already, is increased communication, centralized communication, not just among the event organizer and us, but also between the event organizer, other city departments who may approve these licenses have a review in the application process, and facilitate conversations both ahead of time, prior to submission of application, as well as through the application process, if any issues come up. We will, again, being centralized communication, will act as liaison for those event organizers and help them through the process, which has, is cumbersome, and we are continuing and continuing to meet, as recent as yesterday and the day before, as you see from the TUP presentation earlier, things are evolving quickly, and we want to make sure that we make this as easy as possible to those users or those licensees. The other things that we've been doing is continuing to produce events, such as Arizona Celebration of Freedom, celebrate Mesa, and things of that nature. So we expect to have an increased, increased participation in those. Before, it might have been the PIO's office or a different department. Some departments will still be responsible for a portion of their section, but we'll have a little bit more involvement in that. The other goal is to make sure that we're not outside of what other neighboring cities are doing, or how they're processing special event licenses. So we've compared to other cities, we've looked at their processes, their handbooks, and we're going to strive to make it at least as easy and simple as that, if not easier and simpler with our clients. So we'll continue to monitor that as time goes, but it is to not be outside of what the norm is. If somebody were to do a special event in Chandler or in Scottsdale, they came here, we wouldn't want necessarily something that puts them off, but something that actually would entice them to come back. The other thing is allocation of city resources. Prior to this office being formed, you know, things were coming piecemeal for different events, so with this increased coordination and communication with our office, our hope is certainly to be able to look at a big canvas of events and figure out how to plug those in, and what type of support they need, both city assets, human resource, time and energy, and as well as dollars. And then financial and fiscal responsibility and accountability, where in the past, again, with so many different departments taking the lead in special events, whether they be their own or city-supported events, where there's an outside organization, there really wasn't a clear picture of what it was costing the city in both money and time to put on these events. So we're hoping to be able to capture that, again, in more centralized manner, so that we can make better decisions as to what it's going to take, to put, continue to put on special events, better special events, less special events, if that's what's called for. But there'll be an oversight of that, so we can really try to capture costs and expenses and really analyze what it's costing us to put these events on, and per attendee costs, and things of that nature will help us create some metrics. So as Andrea mentioned back in May, we came to council and asked for an increase in the FTEs that were currently supporting special events. So we created a, an organizational chart based on that, and made some assignments, and I'm going to let Roger speak to that, because he really has been at the head of trying to staff this and get our team going in order to be able to support some of these underlying objectives and philosophies. So as far as this, I'm going to turn it over to Roger, so he can explain where we are.
Thanks, Mayor, council, thanks for your time this morning. I'll speak to the current organizational structure of my team. As you can see, there are different lanes of staffing. I'll speak to the left lane, that coordinator, the park special events. That person would be supervising the city-sponsored events, and my comments will speak to the next slide on categories of events. That person and that team of the department would handle city-sponsored events, which are the events that are put on and produced by the city of Mesa. That would be Celebration of Freedom, Celebrate Mesa, Mary Main Street, events of those nature. On the right side, you've got a recreation coordinator that would help support citywide engagement, and those events that are not necessarily produced by the city of Mesa, but are heavily supported. Those events would be the Marathon, Ironman, Powwow, events of those nature, where we provide quite a bit of equipment, financial resources, staffing resources. So that person will help coordinate that lane of events. And then down the center of the organizational chart, you've got a recreation programmer that would then handle your private events that want to use the city, whether that be within a park or another venue within the city. So pretty much a rental of a city venue, not so much like your amphitheater, Mesa Art Center, but more of a park setting, an outdoor setting. Some examples of that would be a festival at Riverview Park or Pioneer Park, a 5K fundraiser throughout the city, an event that we don't produce and we don't support financially or with staffing resources, but one that we help navigate the process to become approved within the city. And then below each one of those lanes of the structure, you've got part-time staff that will be our eyes and ears out in the field, and it will also help us with deliverables to each lane of event, that will helping us out with our post-event evaluations, which I think is critical with the creation of this area of the department, and report back to us on what the events have or have not done, according to what they've agreed to. So that'll help us in moving forward with each event and hopefully expediting, you know, our good players with events that can quickly, if you will, renew for the next year. So that's the current organizational chart. In going through what Luis referred to as our discovery period, we know that this could change through time as we launch our efforts, and we realize we might have to adapt, but this is our current structure as it stands today.
So as Roger was mentioning, we, the policy outlines, looking through the events that we have been supporting and reviewing over the last four or five months, it was clear that there are three different buckets of events, or three different classifications. City-sponsored events, and there's some examples there, as well as Roger's mentioned, city-supported events, and private events. Each of these, starting from left to right, require a greater amount of city resources, time, and money, with private events being the one that we're really helping through the process, approving the space and all that, but less boots-on-the-ground, either the day of or prior. They're all going to receive the same type of attention as the other, and that's why we've created the positions within the organizational charts that will be responsive and act as liaisons for these different categories. And again, here are just a few examples, this is not an exhaustive list, but just to give you an idea of what these events look like. And we also recognize that some of these events might straddle two of these class categories, depending on where they are in their life cycle. Some progress from private events to city-supported, and then so, as we go, we will adjust accordingly to the needs of those events. the needs of those events.
So Mayor and Council, I think it's important to recognize, sometimes I think there may be a little frustration about special events, but anytime there's a special event, either that we sponsor, or we host, or even if it's a private event, but it's in a city park, or it's touching city right-of-way, it consumes city resources. City resources have to be dedicated to that, and I know some people are like, well, I just want to do it in the park. It's still a city park, there's still a lot of effort, review, oversight, to make sure that happens, so there's not the ability to say any one of these doesn't have, every one of these has some impact on city resources. We have to allocate staff to review it, we have to have staff out there at the event if it's in a park, so part of this is a recognition that anything that's touching parks, city property, right-of-way, just trying to be broad, we're involved, and there's a resource, and that's why we're trying to come up with a process to work on that, because sometimes I think people think, oh, it's only two weeks away, I can just, you know, show up and put up my inflatables in the park, and show up with booths, and it, and it really can't be that way. So we're trying to help kind of manage the expectations and understanding of resources. As long as they have a big party in their backyard, you know, as long as they're not blocking the traffic in the neighborhood, and making a lot of noise, they can have that event, but when it's in a city park, or, or they're using the right-of-way to do that, we're involved, and it takes resources, and, and so many different events are being created and coming at us, that we've just figured, we know that we have to create a process to really manage that better, and create timeframes, and we'll get into that in a second, where we need the time to review and to coordinate these coming forward, so.
Okay. So the next few slides just really define what these three categories are. Again, city-sponsored events, as Roger mentioned, are those produced or co-produced by the City of Mesa. They're typically supported through either operating budgets, that could be Special Events Office, it could be Transportation Office, or Cycle Mesa, for example. Some of these, Arizona Celebration of Freedom, et cetera, are partially funded by TLT, the transient lodging tax, and of course, sponsorships. These typically, the city-sponsored events are, are, the goal is to provide community engagement and enhancement, sense of place-making, transforming neighborhoods, community safety, and family, create family-friendly activities, some of these which align with the council So part of the city-sponsored events are those that come from council members, and we wanted to make sure that we recognized those, and that there was a place for us to be able to allocate resources when these, when these events come for approval, or funding, or, or some sort of support from the city. So one of the initial meetings that we had with Mr. Brady, and Andrea, and Mark Hirschberg were, how do we spread the wealth across all of the districts, so that, you know, they have a certain pool of money, they can come without having to either throw us for a tailspin, how do we do this, where do we fund it from, so actually identify, you know, what it is that we can provide to the council districts, the council offices, as these special events do come up. So we did a little bit of research, we looked to see some of the past council-initiated events, and looked and see what the typical cost for city resources was regarding staffing, equipment, and that may be overtime staffing of an events on Saturday, and we have to pick up or deliver equipment, bleachers, or whatever, if it's held in a pool, what, how much does it cost us to have staffing there for the special events? And after that research, we, we came up with a figure of about $2,500 in city resources. So what Mr. Brady asked us to do was to come up with an allocation, we can say, within city allocations, this, this seems to be about the right amount to be able to execute some of those events. Now, granted, not everything, we, we weren't given additional dollars specifically for special events, so the city resources are easy to allocate. There are outside costs, for instance, entertainment, a DJ, barricading, or things like that, that, that may be additional money, and the expectation is, just as in the past, either the event sponsor, or that's supported through the office, the, the council office. But again, city resources will, will be covered by the city to the extent possible, to about $3,000 a, a fiscal year, and that has been more than enough to cover some of these past events.
So Mayor and Council, we just wanted to create a level playing field, and kind of make it transparent across all the districts, kind of how, I'm trying to find a way so that every council could feel like, okay, I have an allocation of dollars to, because ever, I, I think almost every district at some point during the year wants to, or has already maybe traditionally had an event, so, but sometimes those events have been creating more demand on our resources than others, and so we're trying to find a way to just kind of let the council choose what those might be, that they're going to sponsor during the year, establish a budget. I, I maybe 3,000, you could probably, depending on the size, you can maybe get more than one, squeeze more than one out, but that's kind of the budget that we would set up as a council, we wouldn't be under the pressure of trying to take all those resources out of the Parks Department and say, oh, you've just got to eat that cost, well, that affects our ability to do other special events. So we thought this may be one, this is a proposal, is create it, for every district, the same amount of dollars for, and these are, we would call these typically council-initiated, I don't know, right, they're what, hosted events, that you would work with us on, or helping to organize and, and provide all the logistics to, but we would establish a budget annually for that purpose, so that's what we're trying to do here.
So Chris, you know, when I used to do events, or Falcon Field, we had to rent tables and stuff, it came out of my council budget, so, so you're saying that this would then take care of that?
Yeah, we, we covered the first 3,000, and if council want to do something even larger than, either through sponsorships, or, like you said, the council budget, then they could do that.
Okay, great, good to know.
Just, if I could clarify though, Mayor Councilmember Luna, it's, if it's a city resource, that's what this would apply to, so if we needed to rent tables from an outside vendor to make up the amount needed for a particular event, that additional expense we would be looking for to fund out of your council budget, or sponsorship, or something like that. If it's a direct expense, it's not, the intention is not to have this $3,000 cover that.
Thank you, Councilmember Luna. So tag on to Councilmember Luna, I have several large neighborhood block parties that I could probably use the word cosponsor during the year, and they're large, they use city resources, meaning they go through the application process, they get barricades, that's pretty much it. Is there any estimate of what that might cost, off the top of your head, for a neighborhood block party, just for barricading, or, and, and the application process, is there a charge for the application process to notify city, and then if I cosponsor that, just using that as an example, what that cost might end up being?
Mayor Councilmember Freeman, I don't believe we looked at block parties specifically, but if the barricades are things that we have available within the city, then that dollar limit would apply to that. And so there is still a fee associated with the license application, the special event license?
And what does that, what does that cost?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I would say, I think with barricades, I think the rule of thumb is, we don't have, we don't have barricades, that's usually something.
Transportation comes out and does that.
Does they, okay, okay, so then that would count towards this amount, is what we would say.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Yes, if we have them, and Roger's saying the license application fee is $100?
For a larger event, $100, yes.
Eric, do you have anything you want to?
I'll just jump in here.
Departments need to talk to each other.
Maybe we can get that way.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. There is a block, block party process, it, it just goes straight through the Transportation Department. We charge a flat fee for typical block parties, and it's, well, that, we actually cover it, it's $160, give or take.
When you say you cover it, what do you mean?
The Transportation Department.
Comes out of your budget?
Pays for the neighborhood, to, to bring out, essentially, most neighborhood block parties are blocking off one street, so to put the, the barricades up on both ends of the block party, we'll cover that, you just call our, our front office to, to schedule that. If it's something larger than that, that'll obviously take more resources, but we can coordinate that.
So going back to your, what your supervisor events, yourself, Roger, I mean, would this fall under your purview, in coordinating with the departments, your staff, for a block party, you probably didn't know anything about it, obviously.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, no, we hadn't discussed block party involvement in, in our discussions with the $3,000 allocation, that was not brought up with the special event, the city sponsored, council-sponsored special event.
So Eric, are you saying then, as well, the barricades are covered by Transportation Department as well?
Yes, we, we cover the costs for the block parties. There's a, there's a one-page application, so we know when and where to deliver, deliver the barricades, but, but the, the Transportation Department covers that cost.
Okay, I'm good with this whole outline, I think it's fair for each council district, but I, I do know that there's a lot of neighborhood activity out there in my district, so thank you for clarifying it.
Andrea, I don't know if it's you, or Roger, or Mr. Freeman, what about liability insurance? Is that when we do an event, I, I always worry about, what if somebody gets hurt, and are, are we covered, maybe Jim, you can respond?
Well, for, for the special event license process, which we all agree will evolve over time, as we start consolidating, have renewal options, rather than applying for a new event every year, one of the requirements for that, especially from outside, is a certificate of insurance, that is one of the, the required documents that has to be approved at this point by risk management, to make sure that the city is protected, so we do require those. If it's a city event, we typically, you know, as self-insured, we don't require that. If there's a cosponsor for the event who is the applicant, even though the, the city council, the council office is cosponsoring, we would expect that we would get a certificate of insurance from that primary sponsor, to make sure that, you know, the city is held harmless, in the case, or at least second in line, if anything were to come up. So we do require certificate of insurance, for really any facility rental, even convention center, that type of.
So if it's a council event, we're covered?
A council event would be covered under, and I guess I'll lighten that.
So Mayor and Council, we, we do, we are self-insured, but we do frequently pull separate policy for some of the council, for the city events, and so we, we do work with Andrea and her group, and we do pull separate policies on a number of those.
But if, but if it's a council-sponsored event?
Like Mr. Freeman was talking about, he's got several block parties that he conducts in his area.
So I'm talking about the bigger ones, so I'm not talking about sort of the smaller, smaller events, I'm talking about the bigger ones, sort of the, the parades, city parades, and so we'll, we'll pull, sometimes we'll pull a separate policy for that, not the smaller council member events, we don't usually pull a separate policy for those.
So we wouldn't need insurance then?
So, so we, we're self-insured on, for smaller events, right, so we have to decide whether or not we're going to pull separate policies on some of those events, and so, you know, we have a, we have a trust fund for that, and so we kind of make that decision.
Okay, it helps, I think, when it's an event, especially as a council-sponsored event, under this, obviously, we think the, the state staff's going to be very much involved in helping with that, so that's, I guess, gets us, mitigates against the concern of some kind of additional risk, so we, it's covered by our current policies, or whatever. But if it's someone outside the city, a third party who wants to come into a city park, and have an event, then, then we do require that.
I think this is a great problem to have, I think we've, we've been aspiring, you know, to, by creating all the, the great places that we've created, the parks, and the facilities, and the downtowns, and the museums, I mean, we've created an atmosphere where Mesa has now become a non-stop party, and that's great, you know, I think that, that really adds to the, to the quality of life of our community, and so it, it, it's fun to see our organization evolve to where this is, we're becoming even better organized at managing these things. And again, I think it's for a lot of people in our community, this is the base of our city, when, when you ask, what, how do you interact with the City of Mesa, they don't realize that they interact with us 10 times every day, when they turn on their water faucet, or they dial 911, or they use our city streets, but they'll say, oh, well, I went to celebrate Mesa, that, that's the, the one time the City of Mesa touched my life, and it was great, so, so I, I think it's important, that's why I, I compliment Mr. Brady and, and the organization for, for adding as much professionalism to this as we possibly can, because we do need to manage it well. A lot of these events are downtown, what's the role of DMA in, in all of this?
Mayor, if we could continue, we have a couple more of these types of categories, and then we'll talk about the process, which is where it triggers in when DMA is involved.
Thank you, we'll come back to that then.
So moving on, the city-supported events are those outside, typically, those typically initiated by outsider community groups, and again, some of the examples of that, and you'll have to excuse me, are the Mesa Marathon, the Powwow, the Fest, Feastable Food Truck Forest, the Asian Festival, which is now changed, but some that are initiated, but we are supporting internally with resources, equipment, and sometime, in, in some cases, and of course, through the facilitation of the licensing process, which is about to get simpler, so we, we can all sort of look, see that in the future. But for the time being, that communication will continue through the process that, as it exists, as we transition into whatever new process we're, we're moving into rather quickly. And then, of course, are the private events, which are typically planned completely by an outside organization, financed by that organization, we, the city provides limited and no, no services, except for the coordination liaison, no equipment, typically, there would, typically there is some onsite coordination and oversight, to make sure that they're doing what their license said they were going to do, that their traffic control plan was executed accordingly, and then we can help with the, through the post-event evaluation, which we're going to propose and explain in a minute, of, of, okay, we can renew this next year, if it's a recurring, based on what you did, is, or you didn't do what you said you were going to do, we're going to have to revisit this, so that'll be part of the process. And then, of course, with these, in some cases, for the, the city-supported and city-sponsored, we, we can waive some internal fees, some permitting fees, but for private events, those are fully, fully due, as well as if they were to use any city equipment, bleachers, staging, which we try to limit, they would be paying full market price, as opposed to coming out of, of the allocations, or anything that, that have been established. All right, so this next slide, on the right side, is what we see as the flow of, of an event, from event organ, initial event organizer, all the way through post-evaluation. The, the current process really begins un, below that blue line, which is the event organizer typically, right now, just submits an application blindly, we don't know that it's coming, even if it's a recurring event, we don't know when that event is going to hit, you know, a seller, and, and trickle down to tax and licensing. So our proposed process is to have communication prior to the event applying, so that there is no, the process is clear, what the required documents are, for that process will be pre-organized, so when that process comes, the time to apply for the license, it's a matter of uploading, we would walk them through that process, but it's about a consultation prior to an event, which is typical for other, for neighboring cities, we, from, from our competitive set, we are currently the only one that doesn't require consultation, so that will be part of the process. Now, talking about timelines, ideally, because of department timelines for reviewing these, some are complicated traffic control plans, or may need police support beyond, you know, just a few, and some of that coordination happens, what we're, what we're putting forward is a 90-day timeline to have that initial consultation. Now, that consultation might result in your event is almost a rubber stamp, you're not closing any streets, you're only, so that, it may not require 90 days to process, but we want that communication ahead of time, because, again, with transportation, and some, as we see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven reviewing departments, we want to allow sufficient time for that to happen, and enough time to communicate any changes that might be required. The, the good thing about the consultation is that we can prepare what that The good thing about the consultation is that we can prepare what that application will look like in advance and fast-track it, so that they're not adding piecemeal, those documents are being asked for currently by tax and licensing, which is staffed really by one full-time person, and they have 50 applications currently in the queue, is that we have three different specialists and programmers who can communicate this upfront. So in the time to apply occurs, it is pretty much a full application with all supporting documents that can just go through the system quicker. So one of the other things that we're talking about now, including the previous presentation, is the multi-year or renewal. So if an event can attest that they're going to be doing the same exact event to a certain extent, we're looking to do a renewal process for up to three years, where post-event, if you can see that blue dot on the right, we will conduct post-event evaluations, which will say, you, this is how the event went, and with, we either need no changes, so for next year, it will be a reminder to you that it's time to renew, and it'll be renewal, not a new license, not a new application. There may be some forms that are required to be updated, for instance, a certificate of insurance, they're typically for an event or for a timeframe, right? So we'd want to make sure that they provide a new certificate of insurance at the same coverages, you know, with the certificate holder being the city, as the wording should be, or a traffic control plan that might be certified the following year before it's actually executed. So there are a few things that they'll have to do in the renewal process, but it won't be this full review which happens initially. So with the renewals, we expect that it'll be a much less expensive, less time-consuming process, and that at the post-event evaluation, if any changes need to be made, they're told what those are, or suggested what those should be post-event, so that when they come up for renewal, all we're looking for are those changes to be made. Safety concerns, anything like that that might change what they did the previous year. But currently, what happens is they do that entire process as if they were a first-time applicant all over again. So we're trying to avoid that, minimize the time, and it really will just be a renewal with a few required fields, just to update certain information, and then we're able to issue a new license. So it's somewhat of a complex behind-the-scenes process, but acting as liaisons, as a communicator with the event organizers and the city departments, we're hoping to close the gap between either times of silence or bottlenecks that might be created because of the flow and how the current structure is. So again, our staffing and separating these out is so that we have more direct contact with the organizers as to where they are in the process, what's expected for next year, prior to the 90 days, okay, we just want to make sure everything's on board, here's a renewal reminder, let's move forward. So it will cut down on both workload for us and reviewing, all the reviewing departments, as well as the event organizer.
That seems important, you know, to have a debriefing, particularly if this is going to be more than a one-time event, but I think that would be a real game changer, because I think most times these events happen and everyone is so relieved it's over, you know, we just throw everything in the back of the truck, and, you know, then we think about it again 10 months later, right?
Correct.
So I'll be curious to hear how often our post-mortem, you know, evaluation occurs.
Right, so not just the post-mortem evaluation, but in speaking with tax and licensing and what Dimes or a seller can do is about having a documented post-event evaluation that is then accessed by the client, by the organizer. So, and we've talked about just having a knowledge that they receive that, so if there's anything they need to, within the next nine months before they apply again, to plan for, you know, we know this has been communicated with them. So it's not just an internal post-evaluation, also with the event organizers, so that they know this went as planned, flawlessly, we'll see you in nine months when you reapply, or when you renew, or within the next nine months, please plan on these changes, so we can look for those changes, simply those changes, when you reapply instead of going through the full process. Okay. All right, so we, so our next steps, we are working, oh, so let's mention here DMA, somebody mentioned the downtown event. So we are working closely with DMA. They do have a bit of a separate process, because they are, up until now, been the primary contact, and really the only contact for downtown business district events. So with every event coming through our office, just for awareness, communication of all stakeholders, we will include DMA in the process, just like, and I'll give you an example, I also manage the convention center. So if special event wants to use a convention center parking lot, they still have to deal with the convention center about their logistics, what their requirements are, even if they have to apply for a special events license. So as the special events office will be that liaison and coordinator between the DMA and the city for those events occurring. They do have specific requirements that deal with events happening in that downtown corridor as far as, you know, where they can place things, easements and setbacks from where they can be, and we'll continue to allow them to manage that part of it in the communication, because really that is their, one of their primary functions, to bring events and help people to downtown. But we'll still have that oversight, the communication. They do still require special events licenses, so we'll be the coordinator for that part and the liaison. But we will also have eyes on the street on those days, because right now there is really no oversight. We're not necessarily going to be the enforcers, but this will help for the post-event evaluation. This is a recurring event, this is what you said you were going to do, this is what we saw with our own eyes, so we need to make these changes if you're going to come forward for another, for a renewal. But we are working closely with them. As a matter of fact, I think they're represented here in the audience today. So one of the things is to publish a handbook that is public-facing. The policy that's before you is really an internal document for the city to set the categories and how, what type of involvement we have in each of the categories. But the forward-facing one, which is going to be really the instruction manual, is one that we're revising. There was one that was floating around for some time, so we have a good framework, but we're revising it, especially as these meetings go on, really on a daily basis, on how to really communicate this information in the most effective way to the public. So in addition to that handbook, which we hope to have completed within the next couple of weeks, with an asterisk, that it may get revised as some of these processes get simplified, we also will plan on having a communication plan with organizers, so that they understand the new process, the new contacts, you know, context of the special events office for them to execute, and really see the value in one point of contact for the city and for their events. So we will be planning on that. And again, we are looking to update the special event license application portal to include the TUP if it's a recurring event, and the renewal process, which is currently non-existent, as I mentioned, right now it's a new application for each event if over four days, or separated by a date, even if it's four days long. If there's any lapse in time, they reapply as a new date. So we're trying to come up with solutions for that, so that it's seamless and really just a click of a few buttons and notifies everybody that needs to be notified of this upcoming event. And then, of course, we, as Roger mentioned, we have a staffing plan right now. We'll continue to look at that and see how we are serving our customers, and I think the utmost important is the communication, both prior to and after an event. So we want to make sure that we are prepared to have that customer experience throughout the entire process. And as we get more popular, more workload, more events, we want to make sure that we're aligned still with that philosophy of being really advocates for an event, whether they're city events or outside organizers, you know, with some limitations. We don't want every event here, but if it's a good event, if they're well-planned, well-organized, especially if they have a history in the city of Mesa of putting on events, either recurring or one-time, you know, we want to make sure that those move forward in the most seamless in a way possible. So we'll continue to meet, a dozen meetings a week, I would say currently, over the next, you know, several weeks and months as we continue to refine this. And we seem to have support from transportation, police, we are speaking to them at every step of the way, make sure that, you know, we're getting buy-in as to the process and that nobody feels excluded. The review, the initial application review is going to be just as important it has ever been. We just want to streamline those recurring events or things that really aren't changing, just again to lighten the burden for everybody and make it a little bit of a speedier process. So with that, we're open up to questions.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Again, I'm anxious to hear DMA's reaction, you know, to what you've just said. I mean, I know you haven't excluded them from developing this plan, and I haven't heard any complaints from them, but I'm just still interested in hearing their reaction, because it seems like some of this is very downtown-centric, you know, for shutting down McDonald, for example, and I wonder if the flow chart ought to be go to DMA, you know, that's the end of the flow chart, because they are, it's such an intense, you know, location for them, and the people, the businesses that are impacted are their members, and it's kind of a family party, if it's a downtown organization putting on a downtown event in a downtown location. So I'm just curious to hear, you know, Nancy and her crowd, how they, if they see any, if they have any concerns with the flow chart that's been presented. I don't need to have all those questions answered right now, but if, Andrea, how do you, what's your thought on that?
Sure, Mayor.
Because it seems like regulating this is problematic, right? If we go in and start telling, saying, hey, you can't do this, you can't do that, we're the big bad city. But if it's DMA saying some of those things, sometimes it's better received from them than it is from us.
Mayor, the city still does need to be the one issuing the license. And so DMA's feedback so far has been in support of that front pre-application consultation period, because it's at that point that we can say, oh, you're on Main Street, you need to get the approval and buy-in from DMA to make sure we're not interfering with downtown businesses, that we're working well with them. DMA's feedback has been, if we hold true to those timelines, it will smooth line the process, and it will make them feel more comfortable, especially as there's been quite a few last-minute or shorter-than-90-day timeframe applications come forward, and it's a scramble to make them appropriately structured to not interfere with downtown and to support downtown. So that's critical, that 90-day pre-application consultation, because of that, because we want DMA to be able to have the time to review and figure out if there are business impacts well in advance of the event. Something like the McDonald Street closure, DMA ends up implementing those, and so there is a process that still goes through a traffic control plan review and approval, but it's standardized. And that's also what we're trying to set up with Pepper now, between ASU and the Plaza. So having that kind of streamlined process still involves DMA and still allows the city to issue the right type of license to support it.
Mayor, it's not, DMA isn't always the exclusive sponsor of events downtown.
Yeah, I mean, I think of some organizations that say, I want to come to downtown and put on an event, and they have nothing to do with anything in downtown Mesa, they just want us to be the location for their event. And so I, and I think this is, I think a year from now, we'll be more sophisticated at this, right? And after we, for example, what role should DMA play on McDonald versus what role should DMA play on Pepper? It's not clear to me that, you know, the downtown Plaza and Pepper Street is quite as, you know, in the realm of DMA as it could be. Maybe they'll disagree with me violently and say, no, that's, you know, you are impacting us in a very intense way with the things that event, that occur at the Plaza and on Pepper Street. So I think we're going to get better at this. A lot of work's gone on into it, it's great, I'm just anxious to get DMA's reaction to it. And you mentioned, Louis, the TLT, you know, the bed tax, and I guess the light bulb went off. I would love for us to see, to use as much TLT revenue as we possibly can. I mean, I know there's a lot of rules around that, and that Visit Mesa will be very interested in any TLT tax that we might try to claw back from them.
Well, Mayor, we already have an agreement that shares those dollars, that it goes to their pot and it goes to our pot, so there's no...
So it's well-defined.
There's no, we don't go and ask them permission to spend money, and they don't ask us to spend the money we have. We've made that separation years ago, so that right now, as the dollars come in, I can't remember the percentages, but percent goes into their bucket, and percent goes into our bucket, and we use it for spring training, we use it for major events, and they use their funding for their purposes.
Okay, so I guess I wasn't aware that we do have claim on TLT money for special events.
Absolutely.
What about things like barricading downtown, or constructing ballards, you know, in place of barricades?
Yeah, most of it's been event-related, events like that, especially sponsoring like Mary Main Street, or Celebrate Freedom, I'm trying to remember, I can't remember all the lists.
Parades.
Parades, the parades are getting a big allocation, so, which is taking some of the pressure off of some of those hosting nonprofits to come up with the funding for barricading, and the security has grown significantly. Our cost for parades is enormous now, right? I mean, the challenges of public safety, or that cost has tripled since we used to do it. So we're taking a lot of those bed taxes and helping to support those parades.
At some point in the future, I'd love to just learn more about that.
Sure, sure.
Just to, I didn't know that that was a source of funding for those things. That's great. All right, Council, questions? Mr. Reddya?
On the public-facing, where does this live as far as this new office? Or if I'm a organization, where can I go to get more information, or like, how do we, how do we broadcast, this is the vets kind of page or info, is that through special license still, or is there going to be a centralized area on our website where folks can get all these different information as far as timelines, as far as the applications, any updates that you all are doing? So can you explain a little bit on the public-facing piece?
Yes, so that's exactly what the two top points out on here are. Currently, you know, as we're going through this, the special event license is still a live link on the city's main website. You can search business, hit special event, and it takes you right there. So during the next few weeks and a couple of months, that's what the handbook is intended to do. So that will be on the public-facing, it will have all that detail. We have a current draft, it's too preliminary right now, so we're thinking that November 7th is a good time for us to target, but all that information will be live on a website. You can do it now, but it's not, the process isn't as clear as it is on there, it doesn't necessarily make it easier, it might just provide information. Then the application process itself is kind of a little cumbersome, you know? So again, by having these pre, and so currently, any special event, we're either doing a proactive reach out to them, or the recurring events, or anybody that might be going to tax and licensing or DMA right now, you know, are being directed to our office. So we're having that communication with the event organizers as we speak for all the major events right now. A couple, you know, might show up, you know, a little late, or we weren't aware, but right now that interaction is happening. So the communication and outreach plan is where we will revise the webpage to have more information, to contain the process in a lot more clear and concise manner. So that's what we're, that's our next step. First was to get, you know, direction on the policy and the objective, and next is to start executing that. And again, realizing some of the things on Dimes and the seller might take a little bit of time, because that will involve IT and reprogramming, you know, but we're heading at full speed toward that as fast as we can.
And does that live in the park section of the website, or still on their, like, the license pages, or is it a combination, or where would it live if I'm... If I'm like organizing something, would I go to the parks section or somewhere else?
I think it'll exist in both places. I think under the special events tab for, on the main page where, you know, people might initially go. But it can exist in both places with links to it on the, on the parks side of it. Because that's what we have a little bit more control over. But, but it'll still be accessible to the public from either location.
But backend will be streamlined as far as it coming to you all.
Correct.
For an event.
Correct, which, which, again, we just met yesterday about that and changing some of the access and some of the, you know, who gets what notification when, when an application is submitted. So, and again, I just want to mention that right now, the way it is, it is a very open portal. So anybody wants to do a special event next weekend can go in there and hit that without any pre-warning. So it's often, not often, but frequently a surprise even to the special events office. So this consultation is what's going to make that, that difference, that shift. Nobody should really be surprised. If somebody comes with less than 90 days and, you know, we want to stick to that as much as possible, do an evaluation. But some, some events really have very small impact. So, you know, while we're trying to, to provide that, that lead time for event organizers to be able to get all their ducks in a row before they hit that submit button and it goes to substantive review. Right now, tax and licensing is doing the administrative review of any application, which is a 10-day period. We're going to be taking that over because we will have that prior communication with the event organizers to know what it is that they should have put in there based on our consultations. And then we can pretty much fast track that rather than, as it is right now, that 10-day review starts from scratch the minute they hit submit for license. So this communication ahead of time will hopefully shorten that window and even the workload because they know what, you know, what it will take to get that initial license and a renewal in the future.
Mr. Luna?
First of all, I think this is a great idea that we have a centralized office that takes care of all these, these events. I think it used to come out of PIO and, you know, they have their own responsibilities. And so that was a smart idea. Was that your idea, Mr. Brady? I don't know. Anyway, thank you for doing that. And I also appreciate that you're going to do a debriefing after we have these city events. And so what are you going to do before, one of the big, you know, we get a lot of complaints, especially some of these running events. Were you, are you going to be responsible for communicating to the broader community that we're going to be having this event, you know, constantly advertising and alerting them? And then, because what happens at the end, then we as council members get all the complaints. Then do we direct them to Roger? So how is, how is that going to happen?
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, a great, great point, great question. In our discovery period, just for example, Transportation PIO came up to me during a meeting and said, we need to be included, possibly included on this review, the review process before an event gets approved so that we can get the word out to the general public, to those specific neighborhoods. And they, and certain PIO areas in each department, they have the resources to get the word out. They just need the detail ahead of time. So that, that I think is an important part of our plan moving forward is to include, not necessarily the, the main city Mesa PIO, but Transportation PIO is an important cog. So, so yes, that's, we're working through that right now.
And I just met with Andrea maybe like a month ago about an event I was having in my district and lessons learned, what not to do, what we need to do. So they were preparing how to alert the neighbors that this event was going to occur. So I thought that was a brilliant idea. So I think doing that, we're going, you know, we're not going to satisfy everyone, but at least we can communicate, you know, what's going to be happening in the neighborhoods. So if they come back to us, it goes, well, we sort of told you like, you know, several weeks ahead of time. We're still going to get them, you know, but at least as long as we prepare our community that these events are going to occur, that's going to be a positive thing. So, so thank you for your hard work. I think this is great that we're doing this and it just, you know, streamlines it, you know? People can come together and I like the way, what's the public face going to be? This is where you go, you have a tab, this is public, you know, these kind of events are going to be happening. This is where you go to get more information and the process required. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions on this? All right, thank you for the hard work. We're looking forward to the, the ongoing party downtown and throughout the city. And getting even better. So we'll look forward, I know this is a work in progress. We'll look forward to getting the, the policy. And, and I'm looking forward to hearing the feedback from DMA and other stakeholders. And I see this as something that's going to evolve and we're going to learn from our mistake. We're inevitably going to make mistakes, you know, for the next year or two as we settle into this. But I think that's to be expected and, and hope for because we're going to learn from it. So, but it's a great plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 1C is a presentation to provide direction on the city's upcoming 10-year general plan update that will go to the voters for approval in 2024.
Do you want to, maybe we should wait, Mayor?
You know what? Maybe we should wait for just a minute. Would, would, would anyone, should we have a, take a little five-minute break?
Five minutes, fine.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you now that you've got all settled. Why don't we just say, let's, let's start at nine o'clock?
That's fine. Perfect.
Now, maybe that's longer than.
Too long.
I'm sorry? Okay. Let's start at, at eight fifty-seven.
I don't want to wait 10 minutes.
All right. We'll start in, we'll start in 10 minutes. All right, thank you very much. We're ready to reconvene. And I know some of us have to be at an event at like, I mean, at nine thirty, not to put any pressure on you guys. But I think you can do this quickly. Thank you.
As you know, the, the 10-year update to the general plan is coming up. We are, we basically are kicking off the processes and all the things that go into it. So we are here to give you an update. I think we had a brief discussion with the council back in March or April. So we are here to give you an update where we are and how we plan to move forward. So just to remind you, the general plan, which I know all of you are aware, it is the official statement of our community, our city that sets forth policies of how we desire, how we plan for the growth of the city, basically relating to our physical development. And it's done through various involvement of various key stakeholders and our residents. As you know, Jeff will talk more about it. This is actually put on the ballot for approval by the voters. So that document, typically the state statutes require it to be read adopted every 10 years. And the process, as you see here, is various agreements. So that's why it become of a static document because everybody gets involved and agree mostly that this is how we're going to, for the coming 10 years, going to shape how the city is planned and how we make decisions specifically or more, more especially concerning the physical development of the city. So in terms of our presentation, we have, we're going to talk to you about the state statute requirement, why we have to do this. It's also required by the city charter to have this. The timelines, we have a consultant that is going to come on board to basically manage this a year and a half process. But before I proceed, I'll introduce Jeff and Rachel. So Jeff just told me everything that actually happens or needs to be done every 10 years. We just pull him to make sure he gets it done. So moving forward, Jeff is going to be coordinating this general plan, working with the various departments that are all involved and helping us to make sure that we meet a timeline and are able to put this before council and then to the voters at the right time. And we have Rachel, who is going to be providing also the administrative coordination with Jeff and coordinating with the other departments. So with that, I'll pass it on to Jeff.
Well, Mayor, Council, there are a number of state statutes that govern the process that we need to follow when updating the general plan. As Nana mentioned, we have to update the plan every 10 years. Jumping ahead to the end of the process, there, when the final document comes before this body for consideration, it will require a super majority, two-thirds vote. So out of seven members, five would have to vote yes in order to approve the plan as written. And then it will have to be placed on the ballot for consideration by Mesa voters. We aim to have that done by November twenty-four, 2024. Another state stat, state requirement is that we have to adopt a public participation plan. So that would come before council and council would have to approve that. The, the state statute essentially says that we need to be having continuous engagement across all geographic, ethnic, and economic areas of the city. Essentially, we're always doing public engagement and we're doing it as widely as possible, which is the Mesa way of doing engagement anyway. There's a lot to talk about on this slide, but in the simplicity and for time, we will say that the Mesa way of doing engagement is making sure that everybody, everybody's contribution matters. We're not going and checking a box. We're really creating co-creators in our community that help us to influence the final product of the plan. We also understand that there are certain residents who want to come out and can come out to evening workshops and spend two hours building something with us. And there's others who simply can't. And so we will have many different modes, methods, locations, opportunities for every resident who wants to engage, to be a part of this process. And we also understand that it's for everyone. We want to make sure that every resident, whether English is their native language or their second language, to feel comfortable engaging with the materials and providing feedback like any process that only happens once every 10, 10 years. There's a lot of rust, people don't remember this process, maybe weren't in Mesa when we did this last time. So there will be a significant education component that helps our residents get up to speed, understand what the general plan is, why it matters, and then to be able to visualize the impacts of the choices that we're making over the next and shooting out to 2050, a long time in the future. So to give you in very broad brushstrokes what that engagement will feel like to our residents, we're going to begin working on the public participation plan immediately. That's going to transition into a visioning phase. We're going out to the community, finding out what their priorities are, what they care about, what they want to see in the city. Maybe the things they're scared of, the things they don't want to see in the city. And that becomes a foundation for the plan. And then we come back a little bit afterwards and we kind of start drilling down the specific elements of the plan, asking residents to make choices and consider alternatives. And then being able to, I think Councilmember Luna, you mentioned last time, being able to visualize the impacts and understand it's hard to see the impact of our choices 25 years in the future. So being able to visualize that and help people understand, oh, I don't know exactly what a mixed-use node is, but I can see this picture and I know what that is and I think that's appropriate here. Essentially, we're speaking the language of our residents and not expecting them to speak planner, which is a language I don't speak either. That's why we need Rachel. And then finally, there'll be a public review and that's when we come back together and say, all right, community, you gave us this feedback, did we get it right? So jumping ahead to the very end of the process, we want you to understand what the approval process would look like. We're going to be taking that final draft of the plan that we come up with during 2023. This would be happening, all of this in 2024. And we read the slide from the bottom up, I hope that isn't confusing. But we'd start with our citizen advisory committee recommendation. State statute then requires that we have at minimum two public hearings before we go to the planning and zoning board. And then there has to be another hearing before we come to the Mesa City Council. Again, that'll require a super majority, two-thirds vote, and then we go to the ballot.
So when it comes to the actual development of the plan, there are certain elements that are required by state statute to be included in the general plan. Some of those you're very familiar with, like the Lanny's element where we talk about our character areas. But there are other elements such as open space, water, infrastructure plans that are all encompassed in the state statute requirements. But overarching to that, there is a requirement for the city to really set the community goals and the development policies that guide our future decisions. If you want to go to the next slide. So our current general plan, which was developed in 2014, the major theme of that plan at the time was creating a complete and recognizable city. And really, we, we saw at the time, it was addressing the trends at the time, the current issues at the time. So at that time, city was really seen as a bedroom community where we didn't have quite the housing-to-job ratio that we were aiming for. So there was a lot of emphasis on creating jobs and not so much on creating new housing at that time, but rather just maintaining what we had. So when we developed the plan in 2014, we had these set of vision statements. So creating and maintaining great neighborhoods, growing and maintaining diverse and stable jobs, and providing rich and high-quality public spaces and cultural resources. So these are really those visions and those, those goals that guide current staff and city council in our decision-making abilities. So, but moving forward, this is really the opportunity for us to look at currently what the situation is in Mesa and to really reevaluate that and establish what our future goals are going to be that helps guide that decision-making. And with that, those were really trickled down to those sub-elements that are required by the general plan, but also to the specific plans that we have throughout the city. So just within this last year, we approved updates to the, the parks, recreation, and community facilities comprehensive plan, and we also adopted the climate action plan. But currently, we have several other updates to our master plans going on in conjunction to the general plan. So this really provides the opportunity to set that framework and decide what our, our priorities of the city are going to be that are going to help kind of define and guide these other plan updates as well.
So for such a project of this scope and magnitude and importance, we, we recognize that we need to bring together as many community stakeholders and team members as possible. And so we do have a few teams we've assembled and we'd like to talk to you about who they are and their roles in the process. So here's, here's a few of those. We have, at this point, issued a letter of intent to award a contract to Logan Simpson for consulting services. They've compiled a team of fantastic planners, public engagement professionals, engineers, economists, housing specialists, everything that we need to support the various arms of the project. Their role in the project is to handle first the major data collection requirements. There's a lot of data across many disciplines. And we will be assisting them as city staff to make sure that they get the right data and then it's managed across all of those different plans that Rachel was speaking about. They also are the lead for public engagement and visioning. We will, of course, be hand in hand with them to make sure that whatever they're doing is appropriate and effective for our community. They'll be supporting our committees, updating boards, and then finally preparing the final drafts of the general plan and the balanced housing plan, and then bringing those back to you for your consideration. We also have a general plan citizen advisory committee. This is a crosscut of different individuals from the city, a team of seven eventually, that will help to guide the plan from cradle to grave. We, we see them as a vital asset in helping to interpret what our residents want and then to make sure that there's that final check to make sure we, we captured the community's vision accurately. And we will be going to them, if not monthly, perhaps more, to, to give them updates and to make sure that our residents are in control of their city's plan. And then finally, there's a technical advisory committee. These are the subject matter experts across the city. I think we'd be remiss if we didn't recognize all the fantastic departments and, and just how technically savvy each of our different departments are. They're giving their time to help support our process. And their major role is to make sure that all the details, all the fine points in the plan are accurate, up to date, and reflect the, the plan and the future we want to see for our city. So with that, we'll take any questions you may have, council.
Thanks, Joe. Plans that Rachel addressed and then I looked at the water resource integrated master plan updated in 2024. Don't you tell me more about that because I'm thinking that maybe we should look at some of that today versus 2024? To update, to update it.
It's being updated right now.
Okay, it's being updated now.
They're, they're bringing, I think, well, Chris, I think has announced that they have their consultants on board now. So they're going through that analysis and they'll be doing that through 2023. And council will have that ahead of your adoption.
By 24.
You'll have it in time, yeah.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, so all those plans listed on there, those dates, those are the anticipated adoption dates when they'd be completed.
You'll have them.
Gotcha.
We'll, we'll bring those to you next, during next year.
Yeah, you know, there's.
Not to interrupt you, but just so we're clear, then does that all funnel up to the document that the voters vote on? And that has to happen in '24 because that's what election is?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
It's, that's why you see all of these going through some type of update process so that they can become part of the general plan update consideration. And really, if you look at the general plan, the big chapters. you look at the general plan, the big chapters touch a lot of these, what are being covered here by these. So we will be bringing those to you as we're also bringing the general plan to you, as they're being developed, right? So you'll have all of those.
Mayor, council, they are being all worked on and updated at the same time, but their schedules are slightly ahead of ours, so that they'd be completely completed slightly ahead of the general plan. That way, all the information that is being contained in those can funnel up into those specific land use elements contained within a general plan.
And well, the benefit too is one of the things we've talked about is with Jeff's lead, just like all these plans, they're going to be public input engagement. So the idea is we're trying to bring everybody to a certain point of kind of same pace, I don't know if the right, the right word. So when we go out and do the public interfaces with the communities, we go out to the different districts, but that we can also have, you know, the transportation plan discussion going on, or the housing plan, or, so we're not asking people to go to like three or four different public meetings to talk about all these different components. We're going to try to bring them together at the same time. So you can go in, have a conversation about the general plan, but then, I don't know, I'm just making this up. There's a booth, a table here on the transportation plan, or you can go talk about the housing plan. So we can, it'll look like, even though they are adopted as separate plans, they are being considered and how they fit into the general plan, and even how we get our public engagement. We're going to try to coordinate that so that's happening at the same place as, as we're having the discussion about the general plan.
Thank you. Well, just to follow up, I thank you for that clarification, because I don't know how many conferences, breakout sessions I've been attending on water. It's just at the foremost, and I want to make sure that our plans are updated concurrently because there are so many variables out there changing on our water distribution for the state of Arizona that we need to be, you know, on board. I know our staff is. They're really good about it, and thank you for about sharing the consultants as well. So all these specific plans and sub-elements are important to, to bring them all together and merge them so that in two thousand twenty-four, we can vote on them and have public input. So I just wanted to share that with you because I, when I saw updated two thousand twenty-four, I, I wanted to understand that better. So thanks.
Julie.
So ten years ago, it was the two thousand forty plan then, right? So we, this is updated every ten years, so in ten years, it'll be called the two thousand sixty plan. That's how this works, right?
Fifty.
In ten years, though, it'll be the two thousand sixty plan.
This is the two thousand fifty. The next time will be twenty. That's how we've used it. The vision is to look out that far.
Okay. So do we take into consideration, like, ten years ago, we didn't have this housing crisis, and right now we do. And so like, but then we don't want to put this huge emphasis on housing and then have a recession, and then in ten years, you know, so how does that kind of play into it?
Mayor, council, so what goes into making the plan beside a community coming up with a council setting the vision, we also look at our current state. So we look at the current population, we look at current job to population ratio, housing, we do, we take inventory or we evaluate inventory of our current state, and then we also look at where we want to be. So the projections, how many jobs would we need for this number of people projected to be in the city, how many housing units we would need. So we look into all that. That goes into the making of the plan as well.
I, I would say is what council wants to look at is what kind of community do you want in, you know, ten years out, two thousand forty?
Knowing specifics of how.
And then, and then we say, once you define that vision, that balance of the community, then we go and say, okay, well, where are we today, right? And what is it going to take? What do we need to do to get to that kind of community we want? And, and if it's, you know, two thousand fourteen was, we want to be this kind of community, but we feel like where we're behind is jobs, right? Or, and so this could, we say, okay, in twenty, on the future, we want to be like this kind of a balanced community, these kind of ratios, this much, you know, whatever densities. And here, and one of the things we come, we need to come back to the council and say, here's where we are today, right? What does it look like, the distribution of land uses and trends? But then that just tells us, well, if we want to be like this, what do we need to work on to get there?
And so then, at what opportunity does the council have times for input? I know we vote on it at the end before it goes to voter approval, but when will we get to have our input? Is it at the strategic planning session next year?
That'll be part of it, and I think we'll come up with multiple opportunities. We'll have to develop some milestones, Jeff.
You're not worried about our voice being heard, is that what?
You'll get tired of five seconds.
And Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury, you can expect to, in the next few months, I think maybe by the end of the year, our consultant will be reaching out to you to do a one-on-one to gain insights from you about your district, about needs, about concerns, things that you think are important. And that's just the beginning. They, they do intend, and we as staff will intend, to have continuous engagement with you throughout the process.
And so I guess back to my original question, we don't really take into account then like potential economic downturns or like downturns. I mean, right now, we're in like this building boom, and we didn't expect that ten years ago. So now there's, like, that changes the look of the city drastically, but I don't know how you predict those things. So is there, do you, do you take like economic issues into account?
Mayor, council, yes, we do. So one of the sections in the general plan actually talks about, you know, the economics and all that. But as much as the general plan is also a static document in, in a way, there is also room, minimum room for sometimes for us to adjust because of the trends that happen over time. But it's also important to take into consideration that this is voted on by the voters. So we have to be very cognizant as to how much change we really can make. So those are all the things. But there is room for us to adjust in certain situations when they need the calls for it.
Okay. Can I say it again? I think it's so, that's why I think it's so important to not think about that necessarily, think about, here's what we want to be.
Goal.
Because then you can figure out, because that's what we, when we adopt the general plan, we adopt those land uses throughout the city in those areas. Now, what happens during that ten years is, what we're saying is, though, when development community comes to us and says, well, right now, the hottest thing to do is to build, you know, X, whatever it is, we'll say, great, here's where it fits into our balance plan we want in ten years.
Okay.
Not, and so they, that's the, where you see a lot of these struggles is the, well, in ten years, we wanted this, but now someone's coming and saying, no, I want to change from whatever ratio of residential or commercial or open space, and now we want to convert it to something else. And I think that's where we always try to hold on to the general plan and say, well, wait a minute. We spent a lot of time developing this vision, this balance, and whatever the trends are, as long as they fit within that balanced vision of, of the general plan, that's okay. But when it starts saying, well, no, now I want to change the ratio, I want to reduce the amount of open space so I can put in more something else, that's when the plan requires the effort to change the overall plan has to be, takes more time, more effort to do that, because the, the community's adopted that plan for the next ten years.
Okay.
I can't believe, I've been here ten years. I remember the two thousand forty plan. And when we did the public engagement, we had these things called charrettes, where you walk in, are you going to do that again? Or can we include technology now? Because, you know, it's ten years ago. And so, and, and you can also change it, because just like what my colleagues are saying, things are evolving, and so they can be updated and say, okay, this is going to happen. But we really do need to look at technology, because people are busy, but they want to participate in city government. If it's, they're available to access the updates to the phone, and they can vote on something instead of putting stickies on, oh, I like this, and put a sticky on what you think is good, that we use technology for that. So something to consider as you begin to move forward.
Thank you, thank you.
I think again, the line of, how do we, you know, this is a dense document for, I think, for people to wrap their head around as far as the future, but also the contents that we need to put into a general plan. So if we can figure out to make it less boring in our outreach programming, you know, adding visuals and adding technology, interactive stuff, like I know during the census, we created maps on where people can do maps or in others, we use digital tools to, for input. And so, less boring, more attractive kind of, or I, I think that will help on the public's kind of vision as far as how do they participate in a kind of abstract, you know, huge three-hundred-page document, right, that we need to develop, so.
Mayor, Councilmember Haredia, we, one of the top things we looked for when interviewing our consultant was their understanding and their creative approach to public engagement, because less boring is good, and we agree, it needs to be less boring. But beyond that, we want to raise our standard for our public engagement and bring to bear every tool that we've learned over the past years through the census, through redistricting, through Imagine Mesa, all the other fantastic efforts, and, and make this engaging both in person and online, and, and also in opportunity engagements. Those are where somebody's maybe going to the store, and we're there, and they happen to be there, and we were able to gather information and help people engage wherever they're at, right? Make it easy and accessible.
It'd be really cool, one day, we got to the point of having a virtual reality, a dreams, ASU dreamscape, like, okay, this is what mixed use is, walk over here. But we're not there yet. But one of these days, maybe engagement will have this reality. I would like to suggest that on our new update, that we build in progress bars, some measures along the way, ten years is especially a long time as the world is changing quickly, to see where we are so that, and four, five-year mark, where are we in this goal that we have achieved? And so that, instead of waiting for a ten-year update and, and not knowing, as we are feeling it now, right, how are we doing on these goals? And we have some decisions to make as when it comes to zoning cases or something. We're feeling that little crunch about not knowing exactly where we are. So if we had some ways to have some measurable, attainable goals or marks or benchmarks, I guess, on a progress bar as we go through the ten years, I think it would help us as we go forward in the next ten years. I also feel some of, our planning has been very siloed. We have a great plan for transportation and transit and housing and whatever. If somehow there can be some way to overlay that a little bit, so all of these silos affect each other. Housing and transit affect each other, transportation, all these things affect the total environment in which we're creating in our city. I don't know how to achieve that, but I would like to see integration so that we don't create a policy under one silo that doesn't allow for the vision of another. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think if you read the general plan today, that when it was adopted, it does speak to that. It'll talk about the role of transit and the type of development that should happen around transit. It talks about the transportation system and how that supports economic development. So I think you'll see a lot of the same things that's in the current general plan where it kind of references, you know, even the limitations of development, how infrastructure and water has to play a role in considering the densities and the types of development we consider. So those, yes, those will be, again, and you, it's in the current plan, and maybe we just need to make it a little more graphical. But it's that you'll see those discussions flowing through the update even today, and we certainly need to make that even a stronger, whatever, gesture in the proposed documents.
Okay, thank you.
Amen to everything that's been said. You know, I, looking at the, the topics that are included in this, I don't mean to hurt anyone's feelings, but land use is kind of, to me, doesn't bubble to the top as the most compelling, you know, topics. I mean, it, things like water and housing and transportation, climate, I mean, that, those are sexy topics that we're, you know, that we really want to be working on, right? I mean, I, the general plan is that boring thing you put on the shelf, and it says where we want to be ten years from now. I'd rather see us with a strategic action general plan that says, it's not where we're going, it's, it's how are we going to get there, right? So I, I don't want it to just be bullet points, we aspire to be blah, blah, blah. It's how are we going to address, you know, because we can't wait for ten years, you know, to have an action plan on water or transportation or housing. So, so this is, this is exciting that we're going to convene and be in the middle of all these conversations. And I think it's important, too, that we, that we have, as, you know, to borrow from Jeff, we don't want plan or speak, right? We want plain English so that all of us can become, you know, experts, you know, and we can all engage at a state level quickly over then, because this is going to be politically very interesting times here for the next year or two, and we're all going to need to be advocating for Mesa a lot, and we're going to need to be saying, here is our, we have a problem in Mesa around water, and here it is, and here's where we want to get. And we have a problem in Mesa around housing and transportation. So, so this is coming at a, at a great time, where we all need to convene and, and circle the wagons and, and say, you know, let's, let's work on a strategic plan for Mesa. So, thank you. Counsel, anything else to be added to this topic? All right. Thank you for all the hard work you're going to be doing on this. Appreciate it. The next item is actually to take action towards getting there. Item one D is to take action on appointments to the two thousand fifty general plan citizen update committee, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and the Building Board of Appeals. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, Julie.
She's motioning.
You're making a motion. All right. Julie, would you like to make a motion to that effect?
I would like to make a motion.
Thank you. Who would like to second that motion?
Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next is the current events and conferences attended. I know we've all been busy still. Who would like to go first? Mr. Luna?
Yesterday, we attended a great event over at Pioneer Park acknowledging domestic violence, and the prosecutor's office, along with Jim's office, did a fantastic job. The speaker was amazing. So I want to thank all the city staff and that participated, as well as my council colleagues. It was a very moving event, and hopefully we'll continue doing this. It's been this fifth year. So, but anyway, it's, it's a great way to honor and to recognize that domestic violence exists and that we as a community need to do something about it. So, so thank you for, for hosting that. It was a great event. And this week, we also hosted, I attended a Boy Scout event over at church over in District Five, and the kids were really good to learn about city government. So that was a lot of fun. And I, the mayor, I have to leave in a second, but I do want to alert the community that we have Dia de los Martos starting Saturday and Sunday, and I hope to see all of you there.
Yes. Don't miss Dia de los Martos.
Right.
And it's going to spill over on the other side of Main Street this year, I hear. So it's going to be bigger and better than ever. So it, what, Saturday and Sunday, David? All day, both days?
It starts at ten AM on Saturday, and, and then it goes till ten? I don't know. It goes late. And then I think.
I know. Sunday afternoon, we're going to be at kind of the grand parade, right? The combination, that's around four or five.
Four thirty.
On, on Sunday afternoon. That's a, that's a great thing to attend. So starting sometime around ten AM on Saturday morning and going through Sunday late afternoon at least.
I think ten o'clock on Saturday, though.
Yes.
Because I have to kick it off.
I think we can make a motion right now that it's going to start. All right.
Well, Saturday, there's the breakfast for me.
And there's a breakfast, yeah.
The Dia de los Martos breakfast?
Yes.
Okay. So that's at the Mesa Art Center?
Yeah. Yeah.
I hope that's on my calendar. All right. Thank you. Who else would like to talk about events? Vice Mayor?
I, I want to mention that this week, the Mesa Business Builder Networking Event, thank you Economic Development for hosting that with the hub. It was a well-attended event, and there were businesses from across the city, not just central. It was hosted in Benedictine University in downtown here, and so I expected more of the downtown crowd. But it was across the city, very well-attended, a lot of energy and enthusiasm over the program. Thank you for putting that together. I look forward to what's ahead with the Small Business Three Store Center at the studios, maybe a year from now, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's ten to five. I just found it.
Ten to five on Saturday.
And Sunday.
And Sunday.
And Sunday. Okay.
With the breakfast.
Well, I don't.
Apparently, there's a breakfast on.
Well, I know we do, but I don't know.
No, not for, it may not be a public event.
That's not a public thing.
All right, public, you can't come. Sorry. But come through the rest of the day. Phenomenal. Great. Hey, this week and month is fire prevention month, and we went to a breakfast over, the annual breakfast over at Fire Admin, Old Fire Station Two-O-One. And they challenged us to test our smoke alarms and gas appliances for carbon monoxide detectors and other safety features. So be aware of that, that this month is fire prevention month. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I was checking my calendar to see if I'm going to be at a breakfast on Saturday morning, and what I was reminded, maybe Mr. Brady was going to mention this, the cemetery tour is this Saturday. That sounds like, maybe that's a little funny, right? But it's not. The Mesa Cemetery is very cool, very educational, a lot of character there, a lot of very cool historic figures that are there, and a lot of neat lives, you know, of the people that are there that need to be remembered, so. Entertainers are going to be highlighted?
Yeah, like Waylon Jennings.
I know, I will be one of the, a lot of times, I get assigned to be at a particular grave. This year, I'm going to be at Councilmember and Vice Mayor Jerry Boyd's grave, a very historic figure, first African-American, I think, on our city council, so. But that's just an example of there's lots of really neat stories at the cemetery, and so that will be this Saturday morning, I think, beginning at 8:00 AM.
And I'm speaking on Waylon Jennings.
You have Waylon Jennings. Yeah, that's very cool.
So I'm going to bring my whiskey glass and my 25 cents, and I'll be all in.
Well, that's a great tease for that event.
Take pictures.
Don't forget your hat.
Yeah, I'll wear my.
There's a safe bet he won't forget his hat.
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Brady, what other events are we?
I don't know, you've all covered almost everything, I think. But here, let me give you some good news. There are, because there are five Mondays in October, we will not have an agenda to review for October, this Thursday, October 20, or week from today, October 27. So we will not have a study session on October 27. So the next, but there will be a Public Safety Committee meeting that's scheduled for that same day. So for those who are on the Public Safety Committee, don't forget, you still have a meeting.
That's on line, right?
That's at 8:00 is what I have posted for the October 27. So then our next council meeting will be Thursday, November 3.
Great. Okay. Council, anything else that we need to go over before we adjourn? All right, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury, seconded by Mr. Luna. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.